Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, April 29, 2025. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Ms. Kell Smith. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silence. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Our next order of business will be proclamations and we will go to Councilman Mosley, who has a number of state champions with us this morning.
So, uh, will the Sacred Heart Crusaders and coaches come up? Yes, today is the Tuesday of champions. We have the middle school state champions in the house and we have the high school state champions in the house who you'll hear from shortly. But, uh, this middle school team is extra special to me. I've been watching them for the past couple of years because my son Isaiah is on this team. So I'm looking forward to reading this proclamation. And whereas the Sacred Heart Crusaders basketball team worked hard, very hard to pave their way to victory during the 2024-2025 basketball season. The Crusaders coaching staff led by Mike Denham, Chad Sowers, and parent representative Jeremy Brown have dedicated their time, energy, and efforts to producing a skilled, hard-working championship team. And whereas the Crusaders have worked hard as a team to defeat many opponents in the Diocese League. This season, Sacred Heart won the Blessed Trinity Academy Tournament, Armstrong Tournament, Pittsburgh Diocese Champions, fourth place in the Pennsylvania CLIO State Champion, and also public middle school state champions. Were also undefeated during their regular season. Whereas the Sacred Heart Crusaders have an all-star lineup that consists of Morgan Branigan, Hutton Brown, Harvey Coleman, John Holler, Dominic Jacobs, Patrick McCartney, Mason Miller, and my son Isaiah Mosley, Nico Sowers, and Henry Woolley. This team's hard work and dedication shows how success often occurs when preparation meets opportunity. And therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and congratulate the Sacred Heart Crusaders for their commitment to hard work, discipline, and teamwork. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, April 29, 2025 to be Sacred Heart Crusaders Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Coach Mike, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Well, the one thing I'd like to say is all the hard work from the parents that they put in with these kids and getting them back and forth is a true blessing to have these guys on. These kids are, anything we asked them to do, they did on a daily basis. The hard work and commitment that they put forth is so much to be proud of for these guys. Without Coach Chad, I don't think any of this would have been possible. I appreciate everything that he's done and helped me out in so many ways, more than just on the basketball court. So I appreciate everything you've done, Chad. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Coach Chad. Coach Chad, would you like to come up and say a few words?
I've been with these guys for a while. I mean, I am the JV coach at Sacred Heart, so I see these guys from fifth grade to sixth grade, and then I helped Mike in the varsity in seventh and eighth. So I've been developing these guys for a while. So they push themselves every single day in practice, which gets them to be where they're at right now. In the future, they're going to happen in this game. So, guys, congratulations. You deserve it.
Now, now, you can tell Coach Chad is a basketball coach. He, you know, he looks like a basketball coach. Now, I'd like to pass the mic to the players. If you could introduce yourself, your name, and your grade.
Hello, I'm Harvey Coleman, grade seven.
Hi, I'm Nico Sowers, grade eight.
Hi, I'm Dom, and I'm grade eight.
I'm Isaiah, grade seven.
My name is Mason Miller. I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Patrick McCartney. I'm in eighth grade.
Uh, I'm Henry Woolley. I'm in seventh.
Hutton Brown, seventh.
And could members and parents come up and take a photo?
I also wanted to congratulate Neighborhood Academy on such a great year. I've been following you guys all season. And Jordan, you do such a great job with your kids, man. What a great program.
And I also would be remiss if I didn't also give a shout out to my better half, the Honorable Judge Chelsa Wagner is here. You know, whenever we have elected officials in the house, we always want to give them a shout out. Yeah, I definitely want Councilwoman Strasburger to come up because Sacred Heart is actually in Councilwoman Strasburger's district, though it's very close to that District Nine, District Eight line. Thank you. Another round of applause for the Sacred Heart Crusaders. Thank you. Now, can the coaches and players from the Neighborhood Academy come on up? And if there's any administrators and staff from the schools as well that want to come up, feel free to join us. Shout out to their brave leader, Dr. Williams, in the house today. Thank you for the work you do. So who said Pittsburgh is not a basketball town? You know, we need to start working on an NBA team with all this talent we have here. So whereas, the Neighborhood Academy is a faith-based, college-prepatory, independent school whose mission is to break the cycle of generational poverty by empowering youth and preparing them for college. It is their belief that all students should have access to a high-quality education, regardless of a student's background or socioeconomic status. And whereas, the hard work and perseverance of the coaches of the Neighborhood Academy Bulldogs has led them down a path of hard-fought victory, led by Jordan Marks, head coach, assistant coaches, Chris Wazarenski? Close, okay. Nick Rivers, Yoni Iglesias, Jackson Blawfield, Henry Blawfield. I think I remember Jackson Blawfield from back at the Boys and Girls Club, have worked tirelessly to coach, support, and mentor their team to be successful on and off the court. Whereas, the Neighborhood Academy's Bulldogs basketball team has an impeccable record of 30 wins and one loss while accomplishing section championship, Whipple Class A State Championship, and the PIAA Class A State Champions. The championship squad is composed of Courtney Wallace, who played a lot of basketball with your dad back at Perry, Shamar Simpson, Censor Nicholson, Junior Unobubiko, Kedron Gilmore, Derek Hardeman, Chase Brown, Deandre Green, Dante Wright, Kamir Davis, Yaseer Stribling, and Dreair Mack. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and congratulate the Neighborhood Academy for their commitment to hard work, discipline, and teamwork. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, April 29, 2025 to be Neighborhood Academy Bulldogs Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Congratulations. I don't know who wants to be first to come up and say a few words, the coach or Dr. Williams, whoever, whoever wants to come up.
Good morning, everyone. And council members, thank you so much for acknowledging and recognizing our school on this very prestigious day. As Councilman Mosley said, our mission is to break the cycle of generational poverty and to empower our youth for college and citizenship. And so proud of the journey that these young men took on with one another. Many who began their time here at Neighborhood Academy in sixth grade and hosted brothers that came along in ninth grade thereafterwards. What an impeccable season that these young men had. Sectional champs, Whipple champs, and eventually state champs. But oftentimes, as it mentioned, is the work these young men put in off the court. A team grade point average of 3.6, all of our seniors graduating and having multiple opportunities to attend colleges of their dreams, and scholarship offers to follow as well. Our coaching staff led these young men through a relentless season, dedicating their time and attention to our team and our school, both on and off the court. We're so grateful and thankful for that leadership. In addition to countless administrators and faculty members who chose to stand by our team, and some of the best cheerleaders in the town as well. Not only our girl cheerleaders, but also their parents, who confided and trusted within the school as well. And us being the sixth smallest school in PIAA, we made some big noise this season. So, young men, congratulations, and thank you so much.
Does anybody else from the staff want to come up and say a few words? Anyone?
I just want to thank all the parents for their time and, you know, letting and trusting me and my staff with their children, and they made me look really good this year. And obviously, I want to thank the trainer who's here as well, the athletic director, and obviously the head of the school, who I admire and respect, and obviously all the guys on the team that were phenomenal, listened to me, trusted me, and just the one loss, one blemish. But they were phenomenal and love you guys and appreciate you guys. Appreciate you all. Thank you.
Yeah, and before, I did want to just say, you know, one other thing before we bring everybody up, you know, like I hate to point one player out, but I pointed one player out because I played with his dad, Courtney Wallace, you know, at Perry. And I believe, Courtney, you're going to not only be being the Player of the Year, you're also going to be continuing your education and basketball career at Yale in New Haven, Connecticut. So that's, that's an example of the amazing work that they're doing at the Neighborhood Academy. So I'll make sure to connect with you through Dr. Williams. My nephew went to Yale, so he went to Yale. He graduated about 10, 12 years ago, so he'll be able to give you some pointers on how to make your way around New Haven when you get up there.
One more thing, I'm sorry. And I just also wanted to give a shout out to Sacred Heart and Coach Mike. I've known you for years. And congratulations to you guys as well. Really, congratulations. Thank you.
And now, we're going to, before we have a photo, we're going to have the players introduce themselves.
Dreair Mack, sophomore.
Yaseer Stribling, freshman.
Cameron Davis, freshman.
Don't say you're right. Uh, freshman.
I'm Junior Obubiko, senior.
Chase Brown, sophomore.
Kedron Gilmore, sophomore.
Censor Nicholson, senior.
Courtney Wallace, senior.
Shamar Simpson, senior.
Derek Hardeman, junior.
Thank you, Shamar. I remember you, Shamar, too. I would be remiss if I didn't give a Shamar shout out. I remember you from the Boys and Girls Club back in the day as well. So can we have parents and members come up for a photo? Well, thank you so much. Another round of applause for the Neighborhood Academy.
And now we'll have Councilwoman Strasburger.
All right, I am pinch-hitting today for Councilwoman Kail Smith. So can we get Lilia Worth and her family and supporters and friends up here? Everyone who's with Lilia, please come up. Welcome, welcome. You can stand just to my left. Lila, thank you. Lila Worth, thank you. Before I read your name like 10 times now. Whereas, Lila Worth came from a small town in central Pennsylvania called Mifflinburg, which I actually know exactly where that is. Her family moved to Pittsburgh in August of 2023. And whereas, since moving to Pittsburgh, Lila has taken the initiative of cleaning up the Eileen McCoy Playground and various streets in Mount Washington and Duquesne Heights. And whereas, Lila began picking up trash in September of 2023, but it all started in an unexpected way. At 13 years old, did you get permission to tell this story? She was grounded, and her parents came up with a creative form of discipline. They had her clean up in the neighborhood. What started as a consequence quickly transformed into purposeful routine, which turned into something more meaningful. And whereas, after her grounding ended, Lila noticed the growing piles of garbage and that no one was doing anything about it. That realization sparked one of her strongest motivations. She was also driven by a deep concern for the safety of children and animals near her local park, Dilworth. And whereas, determined to make a difference, Lila took matters into her own hands. Once a week, she fills one to two grocery bags with trash, aiming to clean even more streets this year. Though no one has joined her yet, she remains committed to her mission of keeping the community clean. And whereas, she now has a sense of pride as people light up when they see her walking down the sidewalk, wearing her blue or sometimes pink latex gloves, carrying a bag, and filling it with trash. Those smiles remind her that small actions can make a big difference. And whereas, Lila is currently a freshman attending Pittsburgh CAPA six through 12, studying literary arts. She loves to write, and in her spare time, she enjoys playing volleyball, boxing, rollerblading, listening to music, and making people laugh. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commends Lila Worth for her initiative in cleaning up her neighborhood and for transforming a lesson from her parents into a positive and impactful act. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, April 29, 2025, to be Lila Worth Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
So, hi, I'm Lila. I did start this because I got grounded a while back. But I, like, I go to this park all the time behind my house, Dilworth Park, and I constantly find myself picking up trash there. I once found a broken TV, shattered glass, and my fear for children's safety and animal's safety is just always there because I want to make sure that everybody else is safe. Thank you.
All right, can we get all members up here for a photo, please? Okay, we have another one from Councilwoman Kail Smith, who unfortunately couldn't be here today. Everyone here for Autism Awareness Month, which I think is Joe representing for the group. Thank you, Joe. Whereas autism is the fastest-growing developmental disability in the United States, the most recent CDC data indicates that approximately one in 36 children and an estimated 5.4 million adults have been identified with autism spectrum disorder. And whereas, autism is the result of a neurological disorder that affects the normal functioning of the human brain and can affect anyone, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background. And whereas, symptoms and characteristics of autism may present themselves in a variety of combinations and can result in significant lifelong impairment of an individual's ability to learn, develop healthy interactive behaviors, and understand verbal as well as nonverbal communication. And whereas, while the effort to address autism continues, doctors, therapists, and educators can help persons with autism overcome or adjust to its challenges by providing early, accurate diagnoses, and the resulting appropriate education, intervention, and therapy that are so vital to an affected individual's growth and development. And whereas, it should be the shared goal of all residents of our city to ensure that persons living with autism have access to the lifelong care and services needed to pursue the fullest measure of personal happiness and achieve their greatest potential. And whereas, the City of Pittsburgh is honored to take part in the annual observance of Autism Awareness Month, in the hope that it will lead to a better understanding of the disorder in our communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby, does hereby ask for all Pittsburghers to help raise the public awareness of autism to create more inclusive and understanding communities for individuals with autism and their families. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the month of April, 2025, to be Autism Awareness Month in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Okay. So, and I'll just add my own. I think that we have some great examples. Some are elected leaders in our region, some are other leaders in the region, that you can truly thrive with autism and be leaders in the community as well. So I wanted to add that, you know, it's called a disorder, but I think it can also be a superpower as well. So would all members like to come up and join us?
And we have two to be read into the record.
Councilperson Sharlin presents, be it further resolved, in recognition of the artistic and social impact of Montez Freeland and his work within the greater Pittsburgh region, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare April 25, 2025, to be Montez Freeland Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilwoman Smith presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, May 4, 2025, to be Tim Stevens Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proclamations have been approved. That takes us to a will of council from Councilwoman Warwick. Would you like it read in its entirety?
I would, if that's all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick presents, whereas unless it receives new funding from the state, Pittsburgh Regional Transit has announced catastrophic cuts in fixed route services of up to 35% with an additional 9% increase in fares. And whereas, the impacts of the possible cuts on disabled riders would be even more profound with paratransit service cuts of 62% and fares increased by 20%. And whereas, the cuts would eliminate 41 bus routes entirely, while making major reductions to service on 34 routes and slight reductions in service on another 20 routes, and they would eliminate service after 11:00 PM. And whereas, these cuts would be devastating to the tens of thousands of Pittsburghers who rely every day on public transportation, making it difficult or impossible for them to get to work, school, medical appointments, grocery stores, and every other necessity more than walking distance away. And whereas, to keep the existing service intact, PRT is asking state officials for a $117 million funding increase in the 2026 fiscal year. And whereas, in 2024, Governor Josh Shapiro redirected $153 million in funding to SEPTA to prevent fare increases and deep service cuts to that agency. And whereas, PRT is an economic driver that serves 120,000 daily riders, contributes $1 billion to the state economy, and keeps 39,000 cars off the road. And whereas, the City of Pittsburgh is dedicated to being a livable city for all, which includes the one in four Pittsburgh households who do not have access to a car and who need reliable, affordable, and accessible public transportation. And whereas, the damage these cuts would do to our city's transit riders, economy, and overall livability is incalculable. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby urges the Pennsylvania General Assembly and Governor Shapiro to increase funding to Pittsburgh Regional Transit by at least $117 million in the 2026 fiscal year to prevent a catastrophic loss of transit service. And be it further resolved that a copy of this will of council will be distributed to the Allegheny County delegations of the Pennsylvania State General Assembly and to the Office of Pennsylvania Governor Josh Shapiro.
May we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
With discussion, Councilwoman?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate you reading the will of council in its entirety. You know, this transit crisis is one of those moments where, as, you know, as the various bodies of government, we need to come together and work together and really, you know, this is not the time to say, oh, well, PRT is not my problem, or, oh, well, that's right, like, this is not a PRT problem, this is not a county problem, or, you know, this is a, this is a problem for all of us across the region. And so, you know, whether it's the SPC, the business community, City Council, the mayor's office, county exec, et cetera, you know, county council, et cetera, we really, and our state partners, we really need to come together to ensure, not just to be honest, that we have this fund, this emergency funding, right, to keep our transit from being cut, but that we have strong, dedicated transit funding going forward. Transit and housing are inextricably linked, and we already have, you know, you know, as folks are not able to afford to live in the City of Pittsburgh, they are moving outside to the boroughs and transit, and it makes it incredibly hard for people to get in to jobs in the City of Pittsburgh without a car. So, you know, as we're working on growing our affordable housing, we also need to be working on not just saving, but improving our transit service, because it is a lifeline to jobs, healthcare, school, et cetera, for our most vulnerable residents. But even more than that, and this is what I would really underscore to, you know, perhaps our Republican colleagues in other counties, you know, around Allegheny County, et cetera, transit is an economic driver. In this day and age, a city like Pittsburgh In this day and age, a city like Pittsburgh is, you know, if we are going to grow economically, we need to be attracting people from places like the Silicon Valley, Chicago, the tri-state area, right? And people who live in those places and companies that are operating in those places that may have an eye on Pittsburgh, the fact that it's very difficult to get around, not just the county, but even the city, right? Even just in the heart of our city, it can be very difficult to get around without a car, right? You need a car to go a mile and a half. And that is not attractive to people who want to move. To me, that is sort of the, you know, as someone who lives in a safe neighborhood with a good school and all the great stuff. I love where I live in Pittsburgh. But the transit is an issue, right? I'm lucky I have a car. But if I were looking at places, if I were used to public transit, if I were used to living in a city that had, you know, outstanding transit, it would be an issue. It would be something that would sort of raise an eyebrow if I were looking at Pittsburgh. And I think that will be the same for employers and, you know, companies that are looking to move here. So, yeah, thanks to all my colleagues for signing on to this. And, you know, I know in June, Pittsburghers for Public Transit is organizing, I don't know when exactly, but some kind of rally day to go to Harrisburg. You know, I hope that, you know, together with Philly, with folks in Philly. So I hope that we can all, I know on May 5, the SPC is going to be in Harrisburg. I'm going to head down there for the day with them to, you know, try and have some meetings around this, but really, really underscore in every way we can across the aisle that not only do we need to save transit in Allegheny County, we really need to start investing in it in a meaningful way. Because great cities have great transit. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments, Councilwoman Mosley?
Yeah, first I want to thank Councilwoman Warwick. My apologies. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Strasburger for many things, but today I want to thank Councilwoman Warwick for her leadership on this will of council. You know, I've always been a huge proponent of public transit. It's Council President Lavelle, who we've known each other for many, many years. He used to be my rod when we were much younger in our twenties hanging out, when we worked on this floor for councilman. Udean, he always made fun of me for not having my driver's license. We were in our early twenties. And so I know the public transit system, you know, on a personal level and know the importance of having a robust public transit system, particularly at this time as this council is deliberating zoning codes and planning initiatives that require a level of density that also requires a robust public transit system if we're going to have the kind of density and growth that we're looking at as we embark on a historic comprehensive plan. So this is not the time to be pulling back from transit, but actually to be doubling down and investing in transit. You know, and not only just in the service that we have, but expanding rapid transit, whether it's bus rapid transit or in my perfect world, expanding our light rail infrastructure to different parts of the county, as well as beginning to think about the conversation that Senator Costa started over the weekend about looking at expanding our transit system to a regional transit system similar to the southeastern Pennsylvania transit system and not, you know, having this hodgepodge of several, eight different county authorities, you know, that work together very inefficiently with a lot of duplication. You know, so that was the time, you know, for us to be doubling down on transit. And as we go and look at what Pittsburgh's going to be in 2050, I would hope that it's a Pittsburgh that has a robust transit system. And like my colleague, Councilwoman Warwick said, there's not a great, you know, city in the world that doesn't have a great public transit system. And I want Pittsburgh to be among the group of cities known to be some of the greatest cities in the world. So I think it's incumbent upon us, whether we are county officials, or state officials, or municipal officials, or advocates. And I believe this afternoon at 1:30, there is a rally downtown at Pitt Avenue, head by the transit advocates. I know there's going to be, some of us will be there, some other elected officials, as well as the public comment period will stay open until June, if you go to rodprt.org. So thank you, Councilwoman Warwick. Thank you to all the members for supporting this and look forward to going to Harrisburg and all other forms of advocacy so that we can save transit as it is, but then begin to build a much better transit system in the future.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilwoman Warwick, for bringing this forward. I'll simply add, this is not a problem that was not unknown. The governor, to Councilwoman Mosley's point, helped out SEPTA, the southeastern...
Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania Transit Authority, thank you. Helped them out a year ago with the funding they needed to make sure that they were able to be sustainable going into the future. And so now we need the governor to indeed do the same in this case. So thank you for bringing this forward. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The will of council has been approved. That will take us to public comment. And I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state, the comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which may be before city council. Prefending will not be permitted. After you recall, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Stormy Morris.
Hi, City Council. Stormy Morris. I live in McKeesport now. When I was younger, I used to be a member of the Homewood Youth Group, and our leader was Jerry Murray. And he used to take us around to talent shows and television shows and just help us help the community in the best way that we could. We used to volunteer and things like that. So one day, we had to go to Channel 11 to tape a show. And before we taped the show, somebody pulled Jerry Murray aside and said, yeah, we heard that you're going to have your kids down at the convention center to perform. And Mr. Murray said, yeah, I am. And he said, well, we really don't think that they can represent the black community too well. So we don't want them to come down there. And Mr. Murray was upset about it, but there was really nothing he could do about it. So we did perform at Channel 11. But what we didn't know was Lauren Mann was standing outside of the door waiting for his turn to tape his segment. And he made a phone call. The next day, Mr. Murray came up to us in a meeting and he said, by the way, we are invited to dance at the convention center. And we all were happy, of course. And what I learned from Lauren Mann is when you want to change the world, little things, just little things at a time, get involved. He didn't know us. He didn't care about us. But he heard the situation and he got involved. And last night, I was at the mayor debate at the Kingsley Center. And there was a lot of people talking about young people in Pittsburgh that need help. And I help young people too, but because I work a lot, I can't get involved as much as I would like to. So right now, I would like to present a $5,000 money order to Pittsburgh City Council. And I'm asking you to help the young people because I know you know where everything is and who needs help. So whether it's a girl that needs a prom dress, a kid that needs a pair of shoes, maybe a student at CMU is short on lunch money, something. So just take this and help the young people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dr. Ronaldin Miller.
Dr. Ronaldin Miller, downtown Helsinki, Finland. In the early 2000s, I became a member of the American Physical Society, the American Philosophical Association, and the American Academy of Religion. And I'm also the author of Global Intelligence, 2010 to 2025. A Global Intelligence Society candidate for president, 2028. Global Information Intelligence Network.net. Council concerns include the local vote and local housing. This is consistent with two initiatives of mine for 2028. One, vote by voter verification for whom to approach the Supreme Court. And also local government primacy. Last week, on 22 April, 2025, a disabled veteran said to me, sat down beside me, said to me, you know, I've been listening to you on public city channel, and you make some good points. But he didn't tell me what a good point is. See, and I wanted to know, you know, so I said, such as? And he didn't really give me much of an answer. So what is a good point? So what I'm going to do is to specify using three and a triad that I use in Global Intelligence, physics, philosophy, and religious studies. In physical studies, physics, good is a solution to a problem. A point is that other solutions are reduced to zero value. The approach that is taken in philosophical studies is that good, basically, baseline here, is a syllogistic argument in which there's a proposition A and added to a proposition B to get to conclusion C. And the essential point is that there are other options which are excluded. So it reduces the alternatives, the plausible alternatives, to zero. In religious studies, if I can focus for a moment on Hanyana Buddhism, the good is the decrease of suffering. And the point is the zero self or the no self. There's a little interruption here. So what I want, what I think, is that these show that we need to get to a zero in order to have a constructive one in housing. That means one individual in one house, very small, lowest cost, $1 to $1,000, and do it within a month. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Zasha Minifield. I do not see Zasha online. Is Zasha Minifield with us? If not, our next speaker is Ayesh Azuni. Who I also do not see online. Therefore, our next speaker is Nicole Schaefer.
Hi, good morning, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Nicole Schaefer, 1437 Browning Road in Highland Park. I come to you today with deep urgency to advocate for a greater investment in the infrastructures that we too often take for granted, our libraries, our parks, and critical anchors like the Kingsley Association. For over 130 years, Kingsley's been a space where people of all backgrounds gather without financial barriers to swim, to learn, to heal, and to build community. Very much like our public libraries and parks, Kingsley embodies the values that we claim to hold dear, equity access and belonging. They are part of an ever-dwinding club of city assets that are beloved and well-used for programming that reflects the needs of our communities while scraping by to make spectacular results on shoestring budgets. In the past, this scrappy approach has worked. But today, I must tell you, Kingsley is at a crossroads. Despite rising costs, skyrocketing utilities, staffing needs, and the massive expense of operating an indoor pool, which those of you that have a hot tub or a pool know that the amount of money that you spend on those, it's a sinking ship. Kingsley has received far too little public or private investment compared to the essential services it provides. It does not receive rab funding like other public assets in our city. It doesn't receive any substantial funds from Silver Sneakers or the wellness programming it provides at low or no cost to UPMC and Highmark subscribers, mainly our seniors. It gets pennies on the reimbursements from public assistance. And yet, it's a proud and humble organization that opens its doors to all without question. It's easy to assume that community centers should be free. Yet nothing about maintaining a beautiful, open, and joyful facility, paying living wages to lifeguards and educators and nonprofit employees, and keeping the lights on and water warm for a family swim night, none of that's free. Running a facility like the Kingsley requires the same care and resources that we infest in infrastructure like roads, bridges, our public transportation, and water systems because community infrastructure is every bit as essential to health, wellness, and resilience of our city. While the corporate landscape continues to expand, offering services accessible to only those who can pay, Kingsley stands as one of the few places where the doors are open to everyone, offering tangible benefits, swim lessons, youth workforce training, senior fitness classes, and technology for underserved communities. And yet, it provides intangible benefits that are harder to quantify but impossible to live without. It fights isolation. It builds civic connection across race, class, and generation. It creates spaces for joyful engagement, leadership development, and public trust. In the coming weeks, you're going to hear from a variety of voices that will share with you the imperfect storm that's created a situation that the scrappiest creatives can't innovate in front of. If we fail to act now in the next 120 days, the city and county do not step forward with critical support, we risk losing one of the East End's last true commons. So today, I just ask you as a citizen to remember the urban infrastructure and the access it includes for the invisible and fast.
Thank you. You can also always submit your comments to the clerk's office so we can get them in full. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at the time, provide your name and neighborhood for the record. You'll also be given three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Gani, for realizing the mental health needs for the homeless. The addiction issues with the homeless population, it's because they do not have the mental health help and medical help, so they self-medicate to none. I'm an old-school medical transcriptionist. That was before the legal secretary in the paralegal hat, so many. Before the age of electronics, we old ladies had to transcribe those doctor's notes. I still do shorthand. Bernie, come take a note. Mr. so-and-so is self-medicating with pain and alcohol for his pain with alcohol and street drugs. Note to selves, when you're sleeping on the ground, you're going to self-medicate. Bernie, take a note. Ms. Hoosie Watson never had mental health treatment as a child and has learned not safe behavior and is self-medicating with alcohol and street drugs to dull the low self-esteem. At Mercy, when an addict was admitted, it was not unusual for a doctor to order beer for a patient. Why? The sudden stop of the drugs and alcohol will kill a patient. On the streets begging for money, they are begging not to die. Cory is pushing click-catch phrases. We need transparency. Click phrases for the soapbox, speech like the old paradigm, social construct, woke, now the word transparency. Cory must be watching a whole bunch of Love and Marriage in Huntsville because they use the word transparency all the time. But here's the reality to transparency. You can't say you're going to get us transparency in government when we have sunshine laws and the right-to-know laws. The sunshine law made windows to government. We already have transparency. You can't promise to give us what we already have. Mayor Gani, thank you. Behavior health teams for the homeless, amen and ma'azoltof. And I would strongly suggest start hiring social worker grads and train them to be police officers. Imagine the possibilities. Create incentives that the current officers can get online degree programs. We have all these universities up the street that don't pay taxes. Educate our already in place and our going-forward, our police officers, the whole entire public safety staff. Get them credentialed. Make these non-paying entities do something for the city that will actually help us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I brought my sign again. This sign I've had for years. But there's one part that I have in here. Here's August Wilson. He says, go back and pick up the ball. Do you understand that here in Pittsburgh, the NAACP president has quit because he says that we have low membership? We need the NAACP. At this time, I have to wait till my money comes in, my social security, and I am wanting to join the membership again. I have been a little lax, the same as you have been. But the NAACP fought for us. They have brought out things that we did not know about. I have to stop for a minute because Ms. Warwick, I need to speak directly to you for you to understand what I'm saying. When someone is standing up here speaking, citizens who have taken their time to come down, whereas you just will sit home and call on the phone and make your announcement. We come here, you come, and you stand behind, and he's talking, and you're running and talking. You're supposed to wait until we get finished. We got three minutes. That's all. And you know what? I had then made up my mind, I was gonna come down, I was coming down with a good spirit, but you are, are, are really trying me because the law says we have three minutes, and you can't keep your behind up there at the table, up there, without coming back here. While we're talking, you're in somebody's ear. Do you understand? Do you understand? We got three minutes, and we got a lot to say. I know I do. I've been coming here for 20-something years, and the disrespect I receive from you, staff, even you, Mr., um, your wife, I know your wife, I mean, I'm, I tell you, I'm gonna just stop because I am sick and tired of the disrespect. You should be charged $5 anytime you get up from that table. So if five years of, of nine years ain't there, we got $45 we can get, and maybe we can use for ourselves. Maybe we can, we can take it, hold the table. We can have the table. You know, I'm just so confused because I don't understand how you became council people and don't realize that we are supposed to be given honor and respect. The honor is to shut your mouth while we're talking. Three minutes, and you just do hours, hours. We have to sit here hours, and you just run your mouth during the three, three little minutes. Do you understand? 60 seconds times three, that's all we've got. And you just got hours, and you run your mouth, repeating the same stuff over. Oh, I like the way you said that, Mr. so-and-so. Please, give us some respect.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brown.
Tired of this.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll turn to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilwoman Sharland, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness. Councilwoman Coghill has no new papers. That takes us to Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1777. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Forrester Research, Inc., to provide information, technology, research, and advisory services. Total cost not to exceed $495,700 over three years.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilwoman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Mosley presents Bill Number 1778. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for 101st Avenue, Pittsburgh, 15222, at no cost to the city. Bill 1779. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for 13551st Street, Pittsburgh, 15201, at no cost to the city. And Bill Number 1780. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant payable in favor of Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission for the first of two installments for the 2025 annual membership dues in an amount not to exceed $48,450 and 50 cents.
And Councilwoman Schra- uh, sorry, Councilwoman Kell Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth and Senior Services.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Now, Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 1781. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Roman Catholic Diocese of Pittsburgh, Bishop David A. Zubik, for plaintiff counsel fees and costs pursuant to and federal rule of civil procedure 54D in connection with a litigation matter in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an amount not to exceed $168,500 over two years. Bill 1782. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Taisha Somerville in an amount not to exceed $5,625 over one year in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to her parked vehicle from a city environmental services vehicle on December 20th, 2024. Bill 1783. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of 23942nd Street LLC in an amount not to exceed $3,231 over one year in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to their property at 417 North Millville Avenue from a city police vehicle on June 24th, 2024. Bill 1784. Resolution authorizing interdepartmental transfers in an amount of $647,228.63 from the Department of Human Services and Civil Service to the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Administration, the Department of Public Works Bureau of Operations, Bureau of Environmental Services and Bureau of Facilities, the Department of Parks and Recreation, and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. These budget-neutral transfers are necessary to properly align funding associated with the recent Service Employees International Union, SEIU 668, and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI 2037 contract ratifications.
And now, Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Wilson, Chair of National Economic Development.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I have one communication.
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number 1785. Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting to City Council the attached status update from the Grants Office for the week ended April 25th, 2025.
Amy, motion to read, receive, and file.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill has been read, receiving the file. Our next order of business is reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, presenting the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 1773. Reported a committee on finance and law for April 23rd, 2025 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1728. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Fragelman, Delray, Burnson, and Lowey, LLP, in an amount not to exceed $40,000 over one year for professional services in connection with immigration matters.
You have heard the reading inside of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received a legal required number of votes is passed finally. That moves us to Councilwoman Barbara Ward, presenting the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1774. Reported a committee on public works and infrastructure for April 23rd, 2025 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1713. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement and/or amendments with the University of Pittsburgh for the purpose of providing supplemental waste operations in the Oakland neighborhood at no cost to the city. Bill 1729. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an ownership and maintenance agreement with Almano LP for six bus shelters to be constructed along Second Avenue and Blair Street in the Hazelwood neighborhood at no cost to the city.
You have heard the reading inside of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received a legal required number of votes is passed finally, and that moves us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, presenting the Committee of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1775. Reported a committee on innovation, performance, asset management, and technology for April 23rd, 2025 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1746. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement, agreements, and/or amendments with Liv Barn and/or with Team Pittsburgh Ball Hockey for the purpose of Team Pittsburgh live streaming deck hockey games held at the Deck Hockey Rink in Marmaduke Park at no cost to the city.
You have heard the reading inside of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received a legal required number of votes is passed finally. And finally, Councilwoman Cory Mosley, presenting the Committee of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Mosley presents Bill Number 1776. Reported a committee on intergovernmental and educational affairs for April 23rd, 2025 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1727. Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interests, if any, in into the publicly-owned property in the 30th Board of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 33K, Lot 128, 219 Reefer Street, Council District Number 3, at no cost to the city.
You have heard the reading inside of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received a legal required number of votes is passed finally, and that moves us to motions and resolutions. Is there anything for members? Councilwoman Warwick.
Uh, yes, I would like to motion for a post-agenda on the Safe Passages Program.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll work with Councilwoman Warwick and the clerk's office to get that scheduled. Any, Councilwoman Mosley?
Yeah, in light of the will of council, uh, that we passed this morning, I just want to remind, uh, the residents of the city and advocates, and those who are concerned about the cuts that today, um, there's a public hearing being held at the David Lawrence Convention Center. There's a 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM session, and then a 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM session. And there'll be two other sessions, um, held throughout the spring, but I did want to let folks know that today is, is the first day of three public hearings that PRT will be holding to get the public's input on the proposed cuts.
Thank you very much for that. Anything else for members? If not, we do have meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1 o'clock, council will hold an executive session on Bills 1781, 1782, and 1783 as related to litigation. And then tomorrow, Wednesday, April 30th, at 10:00 AM, council will hold our standing committee meeting. Speaking registration will close at 9:00 AM tomorrow morning. And then also on Wednesday, April 30th, at 2 o'clock, council will hold a cable cast post-agenda on the Oakland Business Improvement District, which is chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. And on Thursday, May 1st, with sessions at 11:00 and 12:00 PM, council will hold a briefing on pay trash cleanups contract. To register to speak at any of these meetings, please fill out the signup form on the Councilman webpage by the deadline. You can also call our clerk's office at 412-255-2138. With that, we need a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.